Good evening and welcome to our, welcome to the PBD School Committee Meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, and we're here at the Higgins Middle School. My name is Joe Amico and I'm pinch hitting for the mayor who couldn't be here tonight. Tonight's meeting will be broadcasted by PBD Public Television and live on Facebook and other social media. Before we start, if we could, have a moment of silence? Thank you. Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under the principle of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight, we're joined by our Superintendent Dr. Vidal, our Assistant Superintendents, Dr. Kelly Chase and Dr. Mark Higgins, along with our Business Manager Sam Ripien. And Laura Boe will be taking our notes as Recording Secretary. Let's start off with approval of minutes.
Motion received and approved.
Thank you. Motion made by Ms. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes. We'll move on to approval of bills. Approval Bill Number One, Warrant Number 5949 in the amount of $537.21.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant Number 5949 in the amount of $537.21, dated February 11th, 2025, subject to audit.
Second.
Warrant Number 5949 in the amount of $537.21 made, motion made by John Olympia, by Mr. Olympia, excuse me, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant Number 5952 in the amount of $232,154.37, dated February 11th, 2025, subject to audit.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Olympia for Warrant Number 5952, the amount of $232,154.37, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes. All right, let's move on to continued business. But before I do so, I just wanted to thank Dr. Vidal, Ms. Dunn, Mayor Benton Court, and Principal Randall, and the whole team that was there last Wednesday night for that incredible town meeting style building meeting for the, for the new PBD Veterans Memorial High School. I watched it live on TV and it was, it was awesome. It was great to see and to all the teachers that showed up and the parents and community leaders that showed up. I just wanted to extend our thank you. Ms. Dunn, would you give us a report, please? Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Amico. Yes, last week was the first of many to come, community meetings, and the purpose of that meeting was to involve the community in the discussions that are going to surround the PBD Veterans Memorial High School project, to get input and to keep people apprised of what's going on. It was a bit early in the process, but we wanted to start off right away so people knew what was going on and could feel a part of it. So, one of the questions that came up was from neighbors who wondered if there would be neighborhood meetings, and we assured them, yes, there will be neighborhood meetings as well. The community meeting was for everyone. There'll be neighborhood meetings for those abudders and people who live close to the school because they have specific issues with any building project. The neighbors have different things than other people would have as far as concerns. Then we'll be having other meetings at the high school for the staff and for the students to be able to hear from them. We'll be creating focus groups, and those focus groups will be working on different aspects of the project. For example, a technology focus group, a security focus group. There'll be various focus groups on the curriculum. There'll be a focus group for CTE and athletics and just all of the pieces of a high school. So, there's a lot of work to be done, and we put it out to everyone, and I'll say it again, if anyone's interested in a specific area, let us know. You can write to the, write to the mayor, you can write to me, write to Dr. Vidal, write to Ms. Randall, and we are going to be compiling those names. And some meetings will take place in the near future, some might take place a few, few months down the road or, you know, into the next year. This is a long-term project and there are a lot of pieces to it. So, it turned out to be great attendance, and I wanted to thank all the school building committee members who came and the school committee members who appeared and watched us so I could get a report. Thank you. I wondered how it looked on the screen. And people brought up some really good topics and issues, and everyone that was there seemed to enjoy the meeting and came away with a good feeling about the project and a lot of excitement. So, thank you. And we're just progressing now, we're just waiting for, the next step will be to submit a request to the City Council for vote on appropriating the money for feasibility study.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn, and I know this isn't your first rodeo. I recall you and I met when, when this building was being planned way back when, and I remember how much you did for our neighborhood because there was a lot of angst and anxiety about this huge building going up and, and you definitely put a lot of people's fears at ease and look at this beautiful building that we have, and I'm sure in four or five years, we're going to have the same one at the high school. So, thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it. Dr. Vidal, do you want to add anything to that?
Thank you. That was a very positive night. We really enjoyed having everyone there. Great questions from the teachers, great questions from some of the neighbors, and we did put up a QR code with an opportunity for some questions. We received some of those, so we will be continuing that. And I believe March 11th, we'll put on the committee's agenda to, to vote, and that, that will move forward. And it's really exciting to start talking about the next steps, and a lot will start to happen over the next year in terms of planning, and we couldn't be more excited about it. So, a very positive night and glad we had so many people coming in attendance.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. And actually, we're going to go right back to you with the superintendent's report, starting off with the F-26 budget update, light budget update.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. So, this is the high-level overview of the budget, and then we'll talk a little bit about the center school update, and then we have one more item, not the Student Leadership Summit, Holocaust and Genocide Education Activities. But first, we'll start with the budget. So, the first slide that we're looking at compares this year's budget FY '25, which was a $94 million voted budget, $37 million from Chapter 70 and $57.5 million from the city. We also had, as we're looking at this budget, the first draft, in rough, rough draft, 30,000 feet, we have about $103,154,694. $38 million will be coming from Chapter 70 this year, and then the municipal contribution is not yet determined. There's an asterisk next to this number because this is not the number that will be voted. There's a lot in here that we'll talk about, and then we'll talk about sort of the next steps. Anytime we talk about going from one year's budget to the next, there's significant budget drivers that we look at. Special Ed out of district tuitions this year. We're looking at about 10% increases across the board. Health insurance is looking at a very healthy increase, and so we'll talk a little bit more about this number and what it means moving forward. And of course, transportation costs. Later tonight, we'll talk about the transportation bid and the impact of that on the budget. And then other year, other things that are impacting this year's budget is collective bargaining agreements. It's a negotiations year, so there'll be money in there as a placeholder for negotiations. We have the center school and the impact of that depending on what the committee decides moving forward, and of course, the end of the emergency shelter grants and how that will impact the budget. So, as we looked at this, how did we go from a voted budget of $94 million to the current budget that we have? So, we started 94,577, and then we added a 14% health insurance increase. That was about $1.5 million, so that brought us up to about $96 million. Now, this number, we are meeting next week with the, the city's Finance Director to really make sure that we right-size that. We do have a little bit of a structural deficit within this budget that we should correct first and then increase, and so we'll be working with Mike Gingris at the City Hall and the mayor to make sure that that number is accurate when we move forward. Special Ed out of district tuitions, we looked at about a 10% increase, which is about $800,000, so that brings us up to 96.9. Transportation, looked at an increase of about $600,000 with our new contracts and other items. That's 97.5. If we look at the step and lane changes for teachers, this is without raises, just our, our obligation moving forward, that's about $950,000, and so that brings us up to 98.4. The emergency shelter funds are not coming onboard. You may recall, last year, we put about $500,000 in salaries into those grants. Those will be coming off the grants and back into the appropriate budget, so that, that brings us up to about 98.9. We're anticipating negotiations, so now here we are at about 100.9. And then the center school coming back to full capacity is 2.25 million, which brings us up to the number that you have before you, 103 million. Now, again, I also want to say that that, that 103 has a lot in there, which, which we'll talk about. But as we think about a target number, we don't have the target yet, but a good number to look at as a first target is that net school spending number. We may need to go a little bit below that, and we understand it, but it is a good number to think about. 98.6 million is really where we should be, so we have, we have a deficit to begin with. So, using that 98.6 as our current target number, and again, this is, is just the ballpark we want to get there, we look at a deficit of about $4.5 million to get to our first target. Now, the plan for the center school will certainly impact our next steps, and so a decision will be made. There are items in here that are almost double budgeted, and so, not that the 103 is not a true number, but we'll have to consider things like student, family, and staff preferences as, as we look to, to try to make sure we, we take into all considerations when we want to open the center school. Of course, the, the school committee and the community sentiment is very important, and, you know, I know that in the future, we'll be having a community meeting to discuss this. And then, a big piece here is a realistic timeline for completion of repairs, and so I, I know that that is something that we've been talking about with the building committee and with some of the members, that we would want to make sure that we have a very clear, realistic timeline for the completion. We also want to make sure that we give our teachers sufficient time to move into their new classrooms. So, if the center school comes back online and, you know, it's, it's going to be, you know, fully occupied, we want to make sure that we have the work done in enough time to move the teachers back, that we have time to do the logistics of hiring the, the moving companies and giving them, them sufficient time. We want to be, we, I thought we were very thoughtful in how we moved teachers during the relocation process, and we really honored their time and did as much as we could. We want to make sure that we do that again. So, if we look at reducing the budget, you know, on the first brush by that 4.5 number, the first half of that number i- is going to come from, if you look at the center school budget, the, the line item in the budget, and there's a couple of other things that, that are added in terms of specialists and things like that. So, the cost of opening the center school with the 23 FTEs that we talked about will cost approximately 2.25 million, so about half of that deficit comes from this number. And so, option one would be that, that full entry. It costs us 2.25 million, and we take those reductions out of the other elementary schools where we relocated people. We bring them back and we take that same equal amount of budgeted items out of the Sullivan elementaries to bring it back to the center. That's option one. Option two would be the phased-in approach with the goal of, of returning to full enrollment in subsequent years, about 17 FTEs, total savings of about six FTEs of approximately $500,000. So, we would look at the reductions, about 1.75, coming from the other elementaries. We talked about in the last meeting kindergarten only, which was not a preferred choice, or exploring other options in options four. You know, the, these are all items that are up for discussion. However, once we make that decision, we'll be able to bring forth a budget that will be 2.25 million less. So, those, those reductions will reflect about half the shortfall, and so what I can do for the committee is bring, you know, actual drafts of options for, say, option one. I'll bring next, at the next meeting, we'll say, okay, if we did option one, the center school budget will stay the same. This is where we'll be pulling the money, and, and then you can make an informed decision. Option two, if we do this phased-in approach, what, what is that option? And, and then we can discuss if we want to even look at options three or four. And then, the next step after that would be we think about some other reductions that we could consider to get us down to that first target number. And so, I'd like to pause there because this is really two items kind of merged into one. We talked about the budget, but I wanted to include the center school discussion because it is such an integral part of, of the budget, and we're certainly not ready to make any decisions tonight, but having this information first, and then I have some ideas of what I'd like to bring you at the next meeting, and if there are more, if there is more information that you'd like to have, you know, I think we should discuss that tonight, and I'll make sure we have that for the committee at the next meeting.
Dr. Vidal, thank you so much, and thank you to your team from, you know, the moving of students and, and teachers to your group that you have down at James Street and Perkins Street with the buses in the morning and the afternoon for those students. For our next meeting, I was hoping that we could maybe have a, a running list of what has been done at the center and maybe get a timetable from, from the Facilities Department as to, you know, what are the next steps and how, how far along are we and, and what's the, what's the potential date for?
Dates of completion.
Completion as well?
Yep, absolutely. And I know that is something that they are working on, and I think we, we should be able to have that for the next meeting, maybe a Building and Grounds meeting leading up to the next school committee meeting, just so that we can talk about it and make sure if there's anything that we need in addition, it can be added. So, just having that extra layer has been helpful in pre, in previous meetings. So, you know, possibly the, the week that we get back or maybe towards the end of the vacation, we can, we can look at maybe even that Monday we return in case there's anything else getting eyes on it before the school committee meeting, I think would be helpful.
And, and thank you again, Dr. Vidal, for, I've been in constant contact with Dr. Vidal and the mayor and other school committee members about, you know, trying to get the center school back to where it was and, and hopefully getting, you know, getting those kids and teachers back there because it is so important to, to us as a committee, but also the neighborhood and the, and the whole Emerson Park area and beyond. So, thank you for, for your patience on, on all my inquiries, but, you know, I've, I've told the mayor, I've told you, we're gonna, we're gonna keep on fighting to get that center school up and running fully, and, and we'll be happy when it is. So, thank you. Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I would like to see would be a list of all of our classrooms in the district with the actual number of students in each classroom, and if possible, if you could highlight the number in a classroom of center school students so that we could see the full picture of all eight elementary schools, to be able to look at where people went and how they're dispersed and what it would be to bring them back if that were the, the case. I'd also like to know, are we going to look at redistricting in line with reopening the center school? We've talked about this for a long time, and I think this is probably the best time to do it if we're going to redistrict so that people have a very clear idea of where they'll be going in the fall. I think we need to know on the, the actual project, as you said, the timeline on when things are going to be completed. That, that is absolutely key to being able to put people back in that school, and I think it's important to reassure the families because what, what I've been hearing, and I know we've all been hearing from families, they feel very isolated and left out. They feel there's been a lack of communication, and they're frightened. And that was why, when many of them answered the survey, they decided they wanted to stay at this school they're at right now because they don't trust us. And that's really a sad state of affairs, but it's the truth. So, I think we need to be able to have some correspondence or some meetings with the families to find out what they want, and as we said at the last meeting, being able to bring them in and show them the school. At some point, we need to be able to say, here's the school you'll be coming back to, and maybe put their mind at ease about the repairs that have been done, make it more, more conducive to decisions. Each family has their own decision to make. Some people just don't want to uproot their child again, especially if they're in the fifth grade or going into the fifth grade, fourth or fifth grade. Others have kindergartners coming in. These are all young families. They have kindergartners coming in that they looked forward to putting them at the center. Now, they're trying to figure out, well, if I put one at the center and the others want to finish at this school, what am I going to do? Is the school going to be open in time? They're, they're, they are concerned, and they have a lot of very valid reasons for being concerned. So, my suggestion is also to reach out to those families and find out exactly what type of information they want because on the survey, it didn't give them the space to explain why they made the decision. And that, that makes a difference. They're very frightened of the school being closed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn, and if I could just respond. So, on the survey, we did have an open-ended question. People left comments, and people did share many of those things. We have been speaking about this for the last five consecutive meetings back since December. We've given all the information that we have, and I have always, you know, tried to manage expectations. The desire has always been to open the center school. I don't want to give false promises. I don't want to let people think that we're definitely doing something if we are not. It's a process. We've been very transparent about it. We're talking about it now. We are encouraging people to come forward. We received some great emails from parents expressing their, their perspectives and, you know, I know that during the, the survey, people put comments in there. Dr. Higgins reached out to them immediately, gave them additional information. So, we're trying to do the best we can. We're trying to cast a wide net, and I think the unknown is, is challenging, and the unknown is unsettling for people, and right now, we don't have the answer, and, and we're trying to work together to make sure that we have a thoughtful process and, and take into account all of that. And I think, you know, we encourage teachers and we encourage parents and families to reach out to us at any time. I'm glad that we had the grandparents of, of our student come at the last meeting, and we encourage families to do that all the time so that we can build those relationships. And anytime people reach out, you know, we try to schedule meetings or phone calls, and, and I think it's important to do that. Unfortunately, we don't have a solid answer yet. We have certainly goals that we want to accomplish, and as, as soon as we have those answers, we'll share them. We have been talking about it at, at every meeting for the past five school committee meetings, and we'll continue to talk about it until we have a, a solidified answer. But I do encourage people, I, I know it's hard to talk to their principals, to talk to, to members of the committee, to talk to anybody in my office, and we'll meet with those people as, as we can. We, we want to support them and, and give them everything that they need. And unfortunately, we don't have a definitive answer yet, but, but I do believe we're close. And, and this information that we'll bring to the next committee meeting, I think will be really helpful.
Okay. I do have one question. One of the things we had promised to do was to have community meetings with the center school parents. How many have we had, other than the very first one? Many of them said there were no other community meetings, and that was a frustration when they couldn't get answers. And the other is, if they ask, you know, one person here, one person there, they will write to you or Dr. Higgins, they'll get, they'll get a response, but there's no general response coming to the families. They didn't know that the preschool was going to be permanent. I didn't either, to be perfectly honest, but the parents didn't know that. That has made them concerned about what else is being done that they haven't been told of, and those community meetings that they were promised, they, they were relying on those. So, this process started last year. If we have, you know, we've been talking about it for the last five school committee meetings, that's only since December. They went all through the summer and all through the fall without getting information. So, that's one of the things you need to look at. We really do. We need to be better at our communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn, and I think what, I, I agree with you, and I think what we should probably look at is after our next meeting on, on the 25th, we'll have a lot more information, and maybe at that point, we can come together and pick out a date sometime, maybe in, maybe late March, because then we'll have a lot more information and, and have a community meeting. I, I would suggest probably here or even in the, the auditorium and, and, you know, have those parents come down and, and let's see what we can do for them and hopefully have the information that we all want. Thank you. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Amico. So, Dr. Vidal, you mentioned that you wanted to have a Building and Grounds meeting. Let's schedule that for February 24th, which is the Monday before our next regular school committee meeting, and I, I also agree with Ms. Dunn and Mr. Amico. Community meeting, it's time for a community meeting, and that's not, I'm not going to comment on the communication, the level of communication because, but I do think that in order to make a, a decision, and I'll say for at least myself, I can't imagine for anyone out there that thinks the center school's not going to reopen in the fall of this year, barring some construction issues or some reason that a building inspector wouldn't be able to give us a certificate of occupancy or whatever is going to be required for people to occupy that space, I can't envision that we're not going to have the center school reopened in some capacity this fall. But that being said, I think Dr. Vidal hit on a number of key points, including some lead time that we're going to need to make some arrangements, either to get teachers, moving companies for teachers to get items back into the building or for families to be able to plan what they're going to do. Transportation issues are going to come into play. So, what I'd like to do in addition to the Building and Grounds meeting on February 24th, I'd like for us to schedule a community meeting for the center school. I think the Higgins is an appropriate place in the auditorium, and I'll just say sometime before our first March meeting. Our first March meeting is March 11th. I understand that we're all, all want to be there, and we all have hectic schedules, so perhaps we can put some dates to Dr. Vidal by the end of this week, and we can get something scheduled here so that we can give those families an opportunity and a forum, and not just families, but staff members also. There's a lot of people that are anxious about this decision, and it's a big decision for us, so that we can give them a forum where they can ask those questions, they can come and be able to get information and things along those lines. So, if we can, as a committee, submit dates to Dr. Vidal by the, by this Friday, and then we can schedule something.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Ms. Dunn?
One last thing, I will say, if you need to, please do not let the Parent Advisory Board meeting that has been rescheduled and rescheduled, and it's now set for the 27th, that's a Thursday night. If that is a night everyone can make it, feel free to schedule it that night because the biggest topic at Parent Advisory Board meetings has been the center school. So, if we need to use that night, go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. The, the only thing I, I think that's a good night, but the only, that's only two nights after we will be getting more of a report on the center school. So, just to let us, you know, take in what we have, so I do agree with Mr. Hockman, maybe sometime in March, either that first week or second week, so maybe if Ms. Markarelli can send out a reminder over the next couple of days with some dates, and we can just have at it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Just, and just to recap, so I have items for February 25th, a facilities list, detailed completed work, and then timeline for repairs. I have a breakdown of the reductions from the elementary schools to be able to bring back the center school in full, a list of all the classrooms and the enrollment, including the center school students, and then scheduling a meeting for sometime the first week of March for the community meeting, and of course, we'll do the Building and Grounds February 24th. Any other items that we'd be looking for?
Mr. Hockman, sorry.
Thank you. No, I apologize. I forgot to mention, can we also get a breakdown as to the expenses that we have incurred to this point and the anticipated cost for the completion of the work?
We'll, we'll include that with the facilities list. We'll include the, the financials of, of that. Yeah, thank you. Okay, and the next item is, we've been doing a lot of work with the Lappin Foundation. Debbie Colton has been an amazing partner with us, and so- Debbie Colton has been an amazing partner with us, and so, we've gotten a Holocaust and genocide education grant, and we've had a number of partnership activities that have gone on, and I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Chase, who's done a ton of work with this, and there's some really exciting partnerships and some exciting items that she'd like to share. Dr. Chase?
Thank you. So, as Dr. Vidal said, we are fortunate to have continued funding from the Holocaust genocide education grant, along with the civics education grant, and those two grants have continued to fund a lot of professional development, training, and special speakers to come in and speak with our students. So, just to give a quick but important update, one of the partners that we work with is the Lappin Foundation, and as Dr. Vidal said, Debbie Colton has been a key player in helping us navigate through training for teachers and partnerships with students, and she is working on a course that would be possible outside of the school day, so a mini-course, that would focus on the intersection of Holocaust studies and its relationship to the civil rights movement. This is a course that she has spent a long time developing in partnership with many other organizations, that would be open to our high school students, who would upon completion have potential to visit Washington DC on an overnight trip, to visit both the Holocaust Memorial Museum, along with the African American History Museum. So, that's something that we are exploring and hoping to pilot soon. Emily Moore, our Director of Humanities, has been instrumental in working on that partnership and bringing those lines of communication to our teachers and administrators. So, more to come on that, but that is something that is in progress. That's part of the shared legacies professional development, so also along the lines of where the histories intersect, in providing a lot of valuable resources for teachers and districts across Massachusetts and nationally. A second piece of the grant funding that has really been helpful is our partnership with Facing History and ourselves, and as a result of that partnership, we have a guest speaker who will be coming in to speak with all of the juniors at the high school, and that's Mark Levy, who was part of the Freedom Schools Movement of Mississippi, so they'll get to hear a firsthand account of that history, and be able to ask questions, and really have a first, firsthand knowledge of that history, and be able to take that back to their classrooms and inform their learning. And last, for the big bullets here, Emily Moore, as I said, Director of Humanities, also participated in a day-long, for lack of a better phrase, a field trip, where she got up at the crack of dawn, worked with Debbie Colton, boarded a plane to Philadelphia, and went to the Weizmann National Museum of American Jewish History, for a day-long workshop that ended up with lots of resources to bring back to teachers. So, she continues to build those bridges to bring back as many resources as possible. Along with those updates, there's also partnerships with Primary Source, so now we're starting to see that the training has come to a point where civics education and the Holocaust genocide education grants are starting to intersect and intertwine, and working with organizations like Primary Source to bring opportunities to teachers for how to navigate conversations in the classroom, how civic activity intertwines with other topics. So, that's just a quick, brief update, there's a lot going on there, but those are some of the big highlights. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase, and I recall that first meeting we had, it might have been three or four years ago, with Mr. Hockman here in the library, and I think Mr. Hockman looked over to you and just said, just do your thing, and you certainly have, along with Debbie Colton and Emily Moore, so thank you so much for all your hard work, it's, not only is it incredible grant money coming in, but it's so important for our young kids to know, you know, our past, and hopefully, we don't repeat it, and you know the story, so it's just so important, and Mr. Hockman, I know you want to speak on this, but you're a big influence on this, because you've been fighting for this for a long time, to bring this curriculum to our city, so I want to thank you and give you a moment to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amico, we as a committee have been fighting for this for a long time. Excuse me, through to Dr. Chase, thank you, thank you for the update, thank you for your continued work in this area, and I'm glad to hear that we're, I know there's a focus on the Holocaust, but it is genocide studies also, and I'm glad that we're branching out to be able to teach our students about the far too many genocides that have occurred in the history of our mankind on this planet, so, and I just want to share, I guess maybe a really scary story that I experienced. I read to a class, I won't mention the school because I don't want to, so I read to a class, and I happen to be reading to this class, I read to them weekly, happened to be reading to them on the 80th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz, and I read a book for the beginning of the year that the teacher selects, and then we read a book about Jackie Robinson when I finished that book, so that we can talk about some of this stuff, and about civil rights, and some influential people, on a level that, it's an elementary school, so that students can grasp, you know, the significance of the difficulties that far too many people experience over the course of time. And it just so happened to be, the day we started the Jackie Robinson book was the 80th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz, so it kind of lent, lended itself to me being able to talk about the Holocaust generally, nothing too specific, or, but just to understand that it was the 80th anniversary of that liberation, and there's about, I don't know, 22, 24 kids in this class, and not one of them knew what the Holocaust was, not one of them, and it scared me, it scared me an awful lot. These are, you know, kids that are a cross-section of Peabody, you know, a state, a city within a state that's number one in public education for as long as I can recall, with a fantastic, you know, teacher, and a pretty broad curriculum, and not one of them were able to understand what I was talking about, and I think since then, their regular classroom teacher has probably brought them some information on this. But I bring this up not really for the scare factor of it, but the, to highlight the importance of the work that you're doing, by ensuring that this curriculum, this information, this part of our history is available to our students. And, you know, I wish it was more available to students in other districts, I talked to families and school committee members in other districts where there isn't a focus like we have here in Peabody. So, I'm grateful for what we have, I'm grateful for the work that you're doing, I'm grateful for Debbie, who's a wonderful leader in this, in this area, and has devoted, you know, her life to not just Holocaust genocide studies, but to the continuation of Judaism as a religion, and the culture that it also brings about, so I just wanted to say thank you, and that was a really long-winded way of me saying thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman.
I'm going to add my thanks to Mr. Hockman, and tell you that I think this partnership with the Lappin Foundation is wonderful, it's obviously so necessary, and it means a lot in Peabody to have that partnership, because in a way, it continues the work of Sonia White's. The Lappin Foundation presented a beautiful ceremony, and it ended up being online, about Sonia White's and about the Holocaust, and at that time, Mayor Bettencourt was on, online, and he spoke, and I felt the same way, we heard Sonia White speak when we were in school, and when they opened the, oh my goodness, it was the Sonia White Center, I think it was called originally, down at the library, at the main library, that was wonderful, because it was a great resource and the teachers could use it. But it was always a big piece of our curriculum, at least at the high school and here at Higgins, very, very important to always remember that history, because there are so many people here in Peabody who survived the Holocaust, and they speak so eloquently about what happened, and they, they are trying to make people listen and understand, because they know they're not going to be here forever, but that story needs to be told forever. So, keeping it as a part of our curriculum is something I'm very, very happy with, and I appreciate what you're doing, because it's necessary, and I wish the staff a lot of good luck in continuing to bring that to our kids, because it really does mean a lot. I'll be honest, when I was in high school, and you've heard me talk about how many languages were taught at Peabody High School, Hebrew, we had three years of Hebrew taught, it was just part of our life, and somehow, we have to capture that and continue it for these kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn, and I do know, just from talking to the mayor and obviously his actions, Mayor Bettencourt is very, very pleased with this program as well, and he's a big advocate of all that we're doing here, so. Dr. Chase, please.
I just wanted to add one more thing of my thanks to the teachers and the students. For example, we had a speaker come in, so they could hear a firsthand account of a survivor, and you could hear a pin drop in the auditorium. So, the level of respect and the work that the teachers did in planning that opportunity for students was really something for this district to be proud of.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Olimpio.
Thank you, Dr. Chase, for everything that you've done, and as echoed Mr. Hockman's sentiments, it does sadden me, because I feel like the kids today, I mean, with all the information you would think that's available, it's just something that's just not talked about. I grew up in Peabody, I remember something that's stuck with me my whole life, was probably being about seven, eight years old, I have more than a few friends that are Jewish, growing up, and getting together with them, and being over their houses at some gatherings, and I can remember some of their older relatives having the tattoo on their arms, and I didn't understand when I was seven, eight years old what that was all about, and it was later explained to me a few years later, but there was such a sense of awareness 40, 50 years ago, and it does sadden me that, that's something that's lost, and hopefully, that we can continue to bring awareness to this. Thank you.
Ms. Olimpio.
Thank you, well, that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, we're at public participation, do we have anyone that wants to speak, anyone online?
Seeing none online.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have written communications, we have a monthly student attendance report in the packet.
Motion received, the attendance report as well as base day textiles report.
All right, great, thank you.
Second.
Motion, motion made by Mr. Hockman to receive the monthly student attendance report and the monthly base day textile report, seconded by Ms. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman.
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Amico.
Yes. That leads us to the education, subcommittee reports, Education Subcommittee, I have nothing to report at this time. Finance Subcommittee, Mr. Olimpio.
Thank you, we met with Mr. Blake and his team prior to this meeting, we had a productive meeting, and negotiations are ongoing. Thank you.
All right.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Rippon.
Yes, I wanted to notify the committee and would ask their approval. I worked with Dan Dusset, our yellow bus transportation contract with Healy Bus is expiring at the end of this school year, and so, we went out to bid, although some, some other companies expressed interest, ultimately, Healy Bus was, was the only bidder, and we, through negotiation, we, we agreed on what I believe is, you know, these days, a reasonable settlement for the, for the three years, and with two options for, so this contract goes for fiscal year '26, '27, '28, and then we have option years for '29 and '30. Currently, we pay $411.25 per day, per bus. That will rise to $475 for next year, which is a 15 and a half percent increase. It still puts us below, because I have in front of me a bus rate survey throughout the Commonwealth, even with that increase, we are very well positioned compared to other districts. In the, in the second and third year, it's not nearly as steep of an increase, it's $25 for each of the next two years, so $475 would go to $500, and then $525, those are roughly 5% increases, and then, for the next two years, in total, increases are capped at a total of 6%. And again, even after the three years, when I'm looking at my spreadsheet here, we're still well positioned, and Healy has done a fine job with the transportation, so I would recommend your approval, so we can execute an agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rippon.
Questions or comments? Ready for a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion to, is it?
So, we'd be looking for a motion to follow the recommendation of the school business manager to accept the transportation bid as presented.
Second, first.
So, motion made by Mr. Olimpio to accept the recommendation of the business manager, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Question. Normally, we get a copy of, like, a face sheet or details in writing of the, of the contract. I would feel more comfortable, could we wait till the next meeting to vote on that, or is this time of the essence?
I know the vendor would, would appreciate a vote, I was hoping Mr. Dusset, I think he, he has another engagement, I would have, I guess I can, I can get that to you, and we'll just have to let Healy Bus know that we're waiting on that.
Why don't we hold off?
Sure.
Thank you.
If we could, we'll just get a letter, a letter on that with the numbers, and we'll, we'll vote on it, or discuss it on February 25th at our next meeting, if we can put that on the agenda.
I think it's, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. We have school safety, Mr. Olimpio.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Hockman, it's almost baseball season, so Athletics and Wellness Subcommittee, please.
Thank you, we have a lot to be proud of here in Peabody, our winter sports teams have, have been performing exceptionally. I would like to point out that the wrestling team, the cooperative wrestling team with Saugus, won the conference, they're having a senior night tomorrow at Peabody High School at 7:00 PM, I think it's open to the public, and let's go get there and support our wrestlers. Boys hockey team is also having senior night tomorrow at the McVan Rink, Dr. Higgins, that's 5:15?
Right.
5:15, so you can go watch a hockey game, watch our boys win hockey, and then walk down the, up the road to the high school and watch our wrestlers. In addition to that, we've had a tremendous amount of success, our boys and girls' winter track won their conferences as well. What I would like to do is to schedule some time for all of our teams that won their conferences to be able to come here, whether it's before the next school, at the next school committee meeting, or the second meeting in March. Dr. Higgins, if you can coordinate with Mr. DeRosa and the various coaches, I think it's time to celebrate some of these kids.
Great, Mr. Hockman, thank you. Next up, Quality and Standards Subcommittee, Ms. Dunn.
Nothing to report this evening, but I will tell you, we are going to schedule a meeting, because we have a lot of policies we have to review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Liaison, we'll hold off on that. Building and grounds, Mr. Hock.
Actually, I do have a report, sorry.
Go right ahead.
On the parent advisory board, the meeting is Thursday, February 27th at 7:00 PM here at Higgins, and that is a meeting that was postponed and then canceled due to snow, and keep your fingers crossed that the 27th comes off.
No more snow.
Right, three times, third time's a charm. Right, three times, third time's a charm. And the other regarding the student advisory board, I attended the National School Board Association Equity and Advocacy Institute last week in Washington, D.C. One of the presentations there was about engaging your students. And many states look to Massachusetts to follow our example, to have student, school committee members and student advisory boards. The Chair of the National Student, National Student Advisory Committee Association was talking with me. And actually, they're very interested in coming out and meeting with our students. They have regional chairs. So the regional chair is from Maine. And hopefully, we'll be able to set up a meeting with our students and talk to them, find out what it's like to be on a student advisory board and be able to transmit that out to other students across the country. So it was an interesting presentation, very, very well-prepared group and lots of good information for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Appreciate it. And thank you for heading down to D.C. Thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, sure. Next, Mr. Hockman, building and grounds?
Thank you, Mr. Amico. As we stated, we're going to have a building and grounds Subcommittee meeting on Monday, the 24th, at a location to be determined. We'll also schedule a community meeting, excuse me, regarding the Center School in early March.
Thank you. Mr. Olympia, for Special Ed Subcommittee, please.
Yes, there was a Zoom meeting tonight for CPAC. And just another thing that I wanted to point out, if you go on CPAC's Facebook page, they have a nice reference for reference materials and books to, you know, for parents to check out. And I found some of the topics very interesting. So if you go on CPAC's Facebook page, you'll see they did a nice little grid of different reference materials that parents can check out. Thank you.
We'll hold off on the Liaison to City Ad-Hoc Committee?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Amico. As Ms. Dunn indicated, as Ms. Dunn mentioned earlier in this meeting, it is time for us to start taking up this subject again in conjunction with our discussion on the Center School. So we need to, it's been a while since we've convened as an ad hoc committee. I think we need to populate some of the seats that are vacant and then reconvene and bring this matter up again.
Thank you, sir. And I know Mrs. Swanson's watching on, on video. I just wanted to thank him for all that he does with the Performance Arts Subcommittee. He's, he's always advocating for our, for our kids, so I just wanted to thank him. I know he's watching, so hello, John.
And Mr. Amico, if I could? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Dunn, I'll yield to you. I just have one, one thing on the performing arts.
Well, I would say that if Mr. Swanson was here, he would tell us that the Masterworks concert is tomorrow night at City Hall. All right, we'll be thinking on the same channel. There we go.
Well done.
Yes.
I was, I was hoping he'd call in or something, but Dr. Vidal, if you would, what, all the details on that?
Tomorrow night at the Wigan Auditorium, 7:00 P.M.? 7:00 P.M.
I think that concludes our meeting. So thank you all for being here. Thank you for watching. And if you have any items for your next, for the next agenda, just reach out and we'll make sure they get out there. So thank you for everyone's support. Appreciate it.